Call. Call to order, the Chippewa County Org of Ministers Meeting September 11th, which already is a tragic day 24 years after nine 11 and then to have Charlie Kirk gunned down in the prime of his life simply because of his political beliefs. Those two together, if we can have a moment of silence for those, if you're joining that, please. Thank you. Just leave it at that because right now Commissioner Lawrence, would you like to read or lead us in the Fledge of Allegiance, please? Excuse me.
Fledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. So roll call, please.
Commissioner Nepper. Commissioner Lawrence.
Here.
Commissioner Shackleton.
Here.
Commissioner Trainer.
There.
Chairman Martin.
Here.
Thank you. Next additions to the agenda, we have a motion on one of those.
I'd move we approve the agenda as submitted.
That was a trick question, yes, we do have an addition, I thought you were aware of it, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I was not aware.
Twenty five, twenty one.
I would move that we would accept the agenda as written with the addition of Resolution 2025 dash 21.
Perfect, thank you.
Fine, trying to help out, man. I'll support that.
We should add support to add to the agenda. The aforementioned. Sorry.
It was requested late from Matt regarding revenue sharing, they're looking for some assistance in getting that back in budget or having it not be in the budget.
All right, any other additions or, or no, we have to, we don't have to do this roll call, correct? Only, only the.
Voice vote.
Amen, okay, so, I'm sorry?
Voice vote, all in favor.
All those in favor of the agenda as presented with the addition. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes. Next, approval of the county board minutes. For the meeting on August 14th, 2024. Page two, your back.
I don't want to try anymore.
Well, come on.
All right, I move that we approve the minutes of our regular meeting on August 14th, 2024.
And I give a hearty support to that.
Motion and support for the approval of the county board minutes, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Next, public comment, do we have anybody, public comment here in the courthouse?
Did you skip correspondence or did I skip?
What, oh, no, you're right, I did. Sorry about that, correspondence received in clerk's office, page 15 of your packet. Eagle, eagle, come on, is there an eagle?
We get a lot from eagle.
Authorized, awful lot of stuff. Anybody?
Go ahead, Justin, where you?
I would motion to receive the correspondence and forward them to the appropriate departments.
Support.
Motion and support to send the correspondence, forward the correspondence on to a office where they can be dealt with, anyone? Arms there, oh gosh, bad day. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes, now, public comment, there we go.
I got.
Evening Commissioners, I'm here to inform you that I have withdrawn from the county early voting agreement. To get started, the municipalities must do one of the following. Conduct early voting as a single municipality, enter into a municipal agreement and conduct early voting with one or more other municipalities, or enter into a county agreement and authorize the county to conduct early voting. The original decision, which included the previous clerk, was a county agreement. Last year, I logged my hours and I worked 400 extra hours, but the 400 hours, over 100 was regarding elections, including managing the early voting. Last year, early voting consisted of 36 days, six weekends, and 20 hours of the preliminary and public accuracy testing. I recently reached out to other clerks to see how many do not have an early voting agreement, or if any agreements have been withdrawn. With the replies I have received, five counties never had an agreement, two counties withdrew their agreement, and one county is in the process of withdrawing their agreement. Last October, I submitted a letter to the Board of Commissioners requesting to be compensated according to Michigan election law 168.830, but it was never put on the agenda of the finance meeting. I have a family and my time is precious, I am not required to administer early voting and I will not do it again for free. If the commission is interested, I'd be willing to discuss at a personal committee meeting, a more detailed presentation on the work required to conduct early voting and the different approaches that can be taken, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, administrator, or I'm sorry, do we have anybody on?
I don't, Brian, is there anybody on?
There is no one on Zoom.
That's called here, once going twice out there. All right, public comment considered closed, please, administration's report.
Just your regular reports plus the additional recycling quarterly report, if you have any questions, please.
Next, new business, Resolution 2025 dash 18, conflict resolution day, October 16th, 2025, Community Mediation Services, page 32, in your package.
I would move approval.
Motion?
Support.
And support for conflict resolution day, October 16th, 2025, rather ironic that conflict resolution is on today's agenda, almost happened in the news. This one will need a roll call vote, please, though.
Commissioner Nepper.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Yes.
Commissioner Shackleton.
Yes.
Commissioner Trainer.
Yes.
Chairman Martin.
Yes. The next Resolution 2025 dash 19, supporting Michigan Senate bills 293 and 294, page 35 again in your packet. Let's play. Commissioner. And if I'm reading this correctly.
I'm curious where this came from.
This came from Marion County, they started this, starting this to get some changes made with the animal neglect and cruelty, and also to help with the shelters so that if we do have a case like we've had in the past, we do not have to shelter these animals for prolonged periods of time, we had a situation on Drummond Island where we were at, I believe, 17 dogs that we had to have medical and house them for over a year, and this will help eliminate that, both prosecutor and the shelter manager have reviewed this and are in support of it.
Thank you.
Hey Bill, so many questions, concerns. Then would accept the motion of supporting Michigan Senate bills 293 and 294.
I'll support it.
And support, any discussion?
Oh, who was the first, I'm sorry.
Who made the motion?
I did. And we again need roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Nepper. Yes. Commissioner Lawrence. May I ask point of innovation?
Clarification?
It's, I, it's probably too late, but I guess I was hoping for discussion and maybe I missed that.
I agree before the vote.
Yes, I apologize. Oh, I'll, I'm still going with my vote.
I mean, we can always discuss the commissioner comments.
Sure.
Where are we at?
Well, we have motion, or no, just.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Right, we were waiting on him.
Yeah. Yes.
Commissioner Shackleton.
Yes.
Commissioner Trainer.
Yes.
Chairman Martin.
Yes. Next is Resolution 2025 dash 20, Brownfield redevelopment authority eliminating geographic designation, page 44 in your packet.
I will motion to approve this resolution. Yes, I'm sorry, I, I'll motion to approve the establishment of the Brownfield redevelopment.
I'll support that.
Motion is for discussion. Yes.
This is why I apologize for not being, not have, for not properly educating myself on the primary resolution and I'll do better, on this one, I have spent some time on brownfields, you know, for, for the public, if anybody listens, are polluted sites or previously industrial sites and having tools in the toolbox for developers to be able to redevelop these sites that are generally undesirable or trigger certain cleanup requirements that make them really difficult to, to redevelop, I think the Chippewa County Economic Development Corporation has been working on getting this passed and other parties and it would allow for us to offer tax credits back to various properties across the county that are redeveloped and cleaned up.
Anyone else? I, I just. It's tough for me as a city county commissioner to expand the geographic area, but I think it's, 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 it's only fair, any place that we can develop businesses in this county, geography shouldn't be, shouldn't be an issue, if you want to do it in Reddard, if you want to do it wherever Kinross, you want to do it out Trout Lake, wherever, and I, I think this goes a long way in giving the EDC a bigger footprint and doing so gives, gives small businesses or starter businesses a good footprint anywhere in Chippewa County they want to go, if I, if I've read the resolution correctly, and you always want to check my reading, so anyhow, that's, that's my two cents, this also, anybody else?
I, I guess I would follow up that, I hadn't heard of any major concerns from the city of Sioux State Mary regarding this, but I do understand what you're saying about it, you know, adding a larger, you know, it's hard to, regional redevelopment versus, you know, you don't want to create a war between various municipalities or government agencies, but that tends to be what happens when you give people economic development tools, they kind of try to pull people, pull, pull developers in different ways, but I think our county is so large geographically that, you know, we have to have those tools for those very far outlying communities that are not near the city.
Very good. Any other? Okay, roll call vote, please, if you would.
Commissioner Nepper.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Yes.
Commissioner Shackleton.
Yes.
Commissioner Trainer.
Yes.
Chairman Martin.
Yes. Next, we have D, which is, which was the addition to the agenda. Kelly, did you want to comment on this, though?
Matt is just looking to bolster their position with regards to the budget right now, they are talking about some pretty big revenue sharing cuts and they are trying to fight that for the counties.
Revenue sharing, it's been, it's been a sore spot for, I think, your whole life.
Yeah, I dealt with that a lot, here it passed, I'd move the passage to the resolution.
Support, motion and support for resolution, you have to help me out with this.
Twenty five, twenty one.
What she said. Any further discussion?
I think it's interesting how it kind of pits, you know, whoever was drafting these budget cuts throw a lot of shifts money, it says into restrictive sheriff funding and that dollars directly focused on sheriffs are not equivalent to revenue sharing, it's almost like it's pitting, you know, the county against its own sheriff's department a little bit, and that's not helpful, but I, I would agree that restricted dollars to sheriff's departments are not as beneficial to counties as having flexible spending ability.
Fair enough, so, next, ready for a vote? Okay.
Commissioner Nepper.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Yes.
Commissioner Shackleton.
Yes.
Commissioner Trainer.
Yes.
Chairman Martin.
Yes. Next, Finance Claims and Accounts. Chairman Shackleton.
Thank you, Finance Claims and Accounts Committee met on September 9th, 2025, at 5:30 PM with a forum present, members present included myself, Justin Nepper, Damon Lawrence, and Jim Trainer, members absent was Jim Martin, others present was Karen Sankus, DJ Welton, Brian Bartlett, Katie Bowers, and Kelly Church, it was moved by Commissioner Lawrence, supported by Commissioner Nepper to approve the agenda as presented on a voice vote that motion carried, there were no public comments, we covered the correspondence and informational items of the treasurer's investment report, visa billing, travel requests, the DTRF OPIB quarterly report, and the annual foreclosure sales act of sales, there is no action required on those items, under agenda items, the Health Department wants to, well, we want with the Health Department to extend their budget to be 15 months to end at the end of the year on 12/31/2025 for equipment contracts and travel, it was moved by Commissioner Lawrence, supported by Commissioner Nepper to approve the county Health Department's budget extension of three months to end at the end of the year 12/31/2025 as presented, including authorizing the health officer's signature on the various maintenance and support contracts, IT equipment, travel with the county allocation of $51,000, the purpose of this is to align the county Health Department budget along with the rest of the county, on a voice vote, the motion carried now with some move.
Support, wish it in support, any discussion about putting this all on the same calendar? Be none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Excuse me, next in the, again with the Health Department was a mission statement organizational chart, annual policy review, and fee schedules, we reviewed the, those things along with human resources, clinical, administrative, financial, HIPAA, a whole host of things that the Health Department has to deal with, the committee also reviewed the various fee schedules, including CCHD's PFH, Shack, and environmental health, it was noted that the Shack and PFH fees are adjusted according to changes in insurance, reimbursement, or new vaccines, and there were slight changes in water sampling fees due to increased cost at the city lab, it was moved by Commissioner Lawrence, supported by Commissioner Trainer to approve and authorize the Chippewa County Health Department's mission statement, organization chart, policies, and the fee schedules as presented, on a voice vote, the motion carried now with some move.
Support, motion and support for the Shack lobby furniture purchase and other things, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Still from the Health Department, the committee reviewed a purchase request for the Shack renovation grant to purchase new lobby furniture, which is student-friendly furniture, which is a bit more costly, these expenses are covered by the grant funds of $5,303.01, it was moved by Commissioner Nepper, supported by Commissioner Lawrence to approve and authorize said purchase at a price not to exceed $5,303.01 on a voice vote, the motion carried now with some move.
Support, motion and support, and for the record, I misspoke on the mission statement because I think I said Shack lobby furniture, just so you have that, thank you. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes.
Next, the committee reviewed quotes from Lamar to purchase billboards through the Social Determinants of Health Grant, the Health Department has working with the, has been working with the EUPISD to update and expand a community information exchange, the project entails promotion of the website, the billboards will run in Chippewa, Lewis, and Mackinac Counties for several months, it was moved by Commissioner Lawrence, supported by Commissioner Nepper to approve the billboard expense for Lamar at the cost of $12,085 to promote the EUP Connects, Community Connections Project through the Social Determinants of Health Grant, on a voice vote, the motion carried now with some move.
Support, motion and support, the Health Department Billboard for Social Determinants, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes.
The committee reviewed a quote from V-Lax Fast Case Incorporated to provide access to statutes, case law, and court rules for the county's public access computer annually for $2,500, it was moved by Commissioner Nepper and supported by Commissioner Lawrence to approve and authorize V-Lax Fast Case Incorporated to provide access to statutes, case law, and court rules for the public access computer, on a voice vote, the motion carried now with some move.
Support, motion and support, any discussion on the law? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
From the 50th Circuit Court, the committee reviewed contracts for the Circuit Court Drug Court forensic fluids, $31 a kit, $22 sample, and $12 a bag, and Great Lakes recoveries, in Great Lakes Recovery Centers Incorporated, so that's who we're contracting with, correct? And the total amount was $20,040, it was moved by Commissioner Trainer, supported by Commissioner Lawrence to approve the 50th Circuit Court contracts for forensic fluids of Great Lakes Recoveries Centers Incorporated at the price I mentioned, and a voice vote, the motion carried now with some move.
Support, motion and support, any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
The next is MIDC Public Defender Contracts, we have a legal services agreement for conflict cases from October 1st, 2025 to September 30th, 2025, with Alfred Felipe, Brian Block, Chad Peltier, Noah Nightingale, Gail, Jana Matthew, Diane Kay, Hunkaboom, and Craig Elhart, upon review, the committee noted the increase in hourly, hourly rates of pay per the MIDC, $130 an hour for arraignments misdemeanors, $142.50 an hour for felonies, $155 an hour for capital cases, plus mileage of 67.5 cents per mile, or current federal mileage rate, the committee approved the contracts as presented, it was moved by Commissioner Lawrence, supported by Commissioner Nepper to approve those legal services contracts, and on a voice vote, the motion carried and I would so move.
Support. Support, motion and support for the conflict attorneys, any discussion? Be none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
From Information Systems, the committee reviewed the LTO9 Tape Library Bit Summary from Information Systems, reviewing three bidders, the projected budget of $15,000, not covering the cost, and after reviewing the recommendation from Information Systems to decline the bids and rewrite the specifications for a more budget-friendly option, it was moved by Commissioner Nepper, supported by Commissioner Trainer to reject the bids received and to rewrite and release a new RFQ, on a voice vote, the motion carried now with some move.
Pushed in support for. I have to reboot this Information System bid, was there a reason for that, Kelly?
The cost, and then there was a lot of back and forth with the vendors and our Information Systems office, and it, it started little and then it just started rolling downhill and we just need to re-group and have it rewritten so it's more cost-effective, it won't, Brian put in his notes that it's not going to slow anything else down, they learned some things and now they'll just rewrite it.
Fair enough, thank you. Anyone else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
Still from Information Systems, this is a Bud's Bit Summary for Domain AD, Microsoft 365, and email migration, the committee reviewed the eight bidding prices and notes along with the notes and recommendations from Information Systems to award the bid to Avalon Technologies, including the G3 and F3 licensing, this migration plan is due to Microsoft, forcing everyone to subscriber-based 365 platform by discontinuing traditional box licensing, it was moved by Commissioner Trainer, supported by Commissioner Lawrence to approve and authorize Information Systems to work Avalon, to work with Avalon Technologies and to not exceed the bid of $78,618.42, including G3 and F3 licensing, following recommendations of Brian Bartlett as he works on the statement of work, on a voice vote, the motion carried now with some move.
Support, motion and support for the Information Systems Bid Summary, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
The next is from the administration regarding quote for the annual audit, the committee reviewed a quote from Anderson Tacman and Agency, or Anderson Tacman and Company to complete the audits for FY 2025, '26, '27, and '28 for the county, including the Health Department at the price of $40,000, $42,000, $44,000, and $44,000 per year, it was moved by Commissioner Trainer, supported by Commissioner Lawrence to approve the professional services agreement with Anderson Tacman and Company PLC to do those annual audits for FY 2025 through 2028, on a voice vote, the motion carried now with some move.
Support, motion and support for payment of our audits, any discussion? So all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
And from the administration, again, this is OPIB, which is Post Deployment Benefits Withdrawals, for the amount of, I will get to the amount in the motion, the committee was updated on the OPIB withdrawals for the county EDC and Health Department to cover the cost of retiree healthcare for FY 2025. of retiree healthcare for F Y twenty twenty five, noting the withdrawals we made on nine thirty, twenty twenty five. Following the advice of Morgan Stanley's Jessica Fitzgerald. The committee briefly spoke about the significance of this first time withdrawal and the prior insight that went into financially getting to this point. It was moved by Commissioner Lawrence, supported by Commissioner Nepper to approve and authorize O P I B F Y twenty twenty five withdrawals to cover retiree healthcare expenses for F Y twenty twenty five. Withdrawals of six hundred thousand dollars for the county, thirty nine thousand one hundred thirty four and eighty two cents for the E D C and four hundred thousand dollars for the Health Department to be made on nine thirty, twenty twenty five. On a voice vote, the motion carried now and so move.
Support. Motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor?
I.
Opposed, motion passes.
And again, from the administration, the committee was asked to authorize the release of annual snow plowing and removal, R F Qs for the county building, the Bingham Street parking, animal control, Sheriff Storage Training Building, and its central dispatch, and adding an optional three year contract. It was moved by Commissioner Nepper, supported by Commissioner Trainer to release the R F Qs. And a voice vote, the motion carried now and so move.
Support. Motion and support for snowplow removal, R F Qs, any discussion? All those in favor?
I.
Opposed, motion passes.
Finance Claims and Accounts, it was moved by Commissioner Lawrence, supported by Commissioner Nepper to recommend the approval of August County Bills and Payroll. General Claims, three hundred ninety two thousand eight hundred forty three dollars and sixty seven cents. Other fund claims, one million seven hundred thirty seven dollars, nine hundred thirty nine and fourteen cents. Payroll, six hundred and eighteen thousand three hundred and forty and forty six cents. And Health Department Claims, one hundred eighty thousand five hundred eighty four dollars, forty nine cents. Payroll, one hundred fifty three thousand two hundred eighty three and ninety nine cents. Total Claims, two million seven hundred forty nine, one hundred twenty three, and twenty seven cents as presented. On a voice vote, the motion carried now and so move.
Or motion and support for paying the bills. Any discussion? All those in favor?
I.
I opposed, motion passes. Next, we have committee comments.
Yeah, that's okay.
Sorry.
So, yeah, I'm sure that on the finance report, we did have to make comments, and there were no additional comments offered. The chairman had no comments to make. It was moved by Commissioner Lawrence, supported by Commissioner Nepper to adjourn, and we did so at six oh three P M. I would move that these minutes of finance claims and accounts for September ninth, two thousand twenty five be accepted and approved.
Motion and support. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
I.
Opposed, motion passes. All right, now we have commission reports on meetings, support representatives, and general comments.
I guess I have a few unless anybody would like to go prior. Want to acknowledge Kindred Woodgate's presentation and I had had a few chats with him over the last three or four months, just about the level of the workload of early voting, the challenges that that his department had faced and I guess I wish a little bit, and I express this to to Kirk Woodgate, that it wouldn't have come to this level of action in this way, but I personally understand, you know, just kind of from hearing from him what he's going through, and I do hope, you know, just in terms of our townships and and our city that we can work on, and I know he's committed to working on a resolution to the challenge. And I also did recommend to him, and I think there was an email sent out that he that we deep dive a little bit more deeply in an upcoming personnel meeting which he had mentioned, if the Personnel Committee is open to that, just that we can understand more of what the clerk's department is going through and how to kind of rectify the situation. So that's my one comment. My other comment is I was, this is separate, but I was kind of wondering if the reason we don't have a lot of participation on remotely or in person today is because of the time change, because I know for Finance Committee, half of us didn't get them, didn't realize that we switched from four thirty back to five thirty. And a lot of us were early, so I wonder if some of the public might not be kind of paying attention. I don't know if that's the case, but that's just my one other comment. And then finally, just another separate topic, we have our opioid settlement committee second meeting on Monday at three thirty, I believe, and so I anticipate some good discussion out of that.
Thank you.
I would just, you know, kind of dovetailing that a little bit. I'm real curious because I have no idea what would, what happens if the county is not involved in their early voting? Is the townships just do it themselves? I mean, this isn't the time or place really for a discussion about it. But this is just, you know, kind of questions that are going through my mind is, well, then how's this work? You know, what, 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 what happens then? And I guess we've never had to really know much about it because the clerk's office are taking care of it at the county level. So though we're going to have to be somewhat educated in what happens and how this works going forward, I guess. So just wanted to mention that I look forward to finding out more about this.
I did have a quick meeting at the prison. Just and they were, it was lightly attended. There seems always any more people on the outside of the bars, not on the inside. They need to, the ones with the keys. But.
Agreed.
The ones that can go home at night. Great, great, hey. And, 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 yeah, I think, I think, I think our new election laws, you know, present some challenges that weren't concerns at the time they debated it for election for proposals, but one, one of the questions I had about it when it was up for vote. What, what people want. I don't know how, you know, I'm curious how other counties are handling it. What, you know, for the county, if the other counties, like you said, that weren't there that aren't doing it, and then just leaving out the town just exactly how that's working, all the solutions are. Hopefully somebody's got one we can mimic, copy. But yeah, it's, it's new territory for all of us, I think, because it's, it's new election law.
And if I might just add, as usual, the state of Michigan makes new rules for us to follow that cost a lot of money and don't give us the money to do it. And this has been going on since long before any of us got elected.
Great. As far as, you know, with clerk's office, as far as compensation goes, that's something for probably personnel and stuff like that. I will just caution that it will open Pandora's box. As, as far as as that goes, but obviously the position has changed. And the pay has not. But anyhow, I just, I don't know where we go with this. Again, unfunded mandate. The other issue, the other elephant room, if we will, is city county relationship right now is, is I would say is as bad as it's been. I'll defer to Commissioner Shackleton since he, he has more institutional knowledge than I do, but there seems to be a lot of tit for tat. And I, I really think the path forward is to go back to the way it was. To where, you know, if they need something, we just supplied it and there was no no questions asked, just did it because we're all fighting for the same team. We're all working for the constituents of Chippewa County. And but of late, it's, it's gotten nitpicky and, and, and if, if we needed something from the city, they just gave it to us. I mean, it's always been a really good relationship until of late. But in, and of course, Commissioner Knapper and myself are in an awkward position because anything that the county does to hurt the city, well, those are voters, those are constituents, and we don't want to hurt our people. But at the same time, there's got to be a level of fairness and I I believe that's the issue that we just we need to play nice. But, you know, I want to do everything for the city that we can. I want to do everything for the county we can, but I don't want to get run over. And you look at all the, all the funds back and forth, why, why can't we go back to the way it was where we just we worked together, we got stuff done, got stuff fixed, got people rescued. You know, got people extracted out of cars. We did whatever needed to be done and whatever tools we needed. And we worked together and, and that's where I would like to see that issue go. Love to to sit down and have a conversation with a couple of our city commissioners and, and try to get back to where we were. I don't know, ten years ago, fifteen years, I don't know.
Three years ago.
Well, might be right there. Yes, sir, Commissioner.
I, I, I would just have a comment on that. I, I just think that I think there's been some communication problems, and I think that we need to reach out and improve communication and try to work through a few of the issues that were kind of butt heads on. And I think that can be done if everybody comes to the table in good faith. We're all serving the public and trying to do a good job for them. I have no doubt they are as, I have no doubt we are. And we just have a few issues and some communication that I think we can improve on, and I, I think we need, we need to initiate that and try to make it happen because that's, that's the end of the day. It's not gonna, it's not gonna serve the public well if we don't have a good relationship with other governmental entities, in particular the city. So we need to try to have that and try to fix any fences that need mending.
Very good, thank you. I just wanted to kind of add to that, that many times what I've, you know, I, I'm new, but I've been around and I worked worked with city staff for many years in my previous role. And I think culture is a huge difference between and this is not just here, but all over the state and in all over the nation. A lot, you know, we, we are operated, where our departments are operated by independently elected officials. And then you have city administration, which is usually professional hired staff. And they look at things a different way than many times that elected officials look at things. They're answering to a different, you know, they're, they're usually going to have best practices, perhaps they learned at university or from training, different things. And sometimes we're looking at things from, from a voter standpoint. All of being said, the other thing I just wanted to add is, I, I can't remember what training I was at, but a long time ago, I remember I was at some training, they were talking about conflict and how conflict usually, major conflict usually can be traced back to small gripes. And you'll have like a small gripe that doesn't get resolved and it blows up into a major conflict. And I think that's a lot of times what we have. You know, it could be you know, some small little, little change, but it feels huge. You know, and, and I think if we remember in any level of government, that if we can dial down to that little gripe and address it and figure out how to fix it before it, you know, kind of gets political or really makes us really wanna, you know.
You mean like parking for jury duty?
I think that one is actually bigger than a gripe, but yes, those types of things. You know, treating it in a way where we're, we're looking at, you know, okay, how, how do we resolve this in a way that's not a civil war, but it's, you know, something we can fix, like you said, mending offense. So I hope we can get there. And I appreciate all the work that you've done and other commissioners and the city staff have done so far, just to chat and talk.
Got to figure it out. And Mr. Mr. Trainer, sir.
I do have one thing I want to bring up. That is ribbon cutting for the new E D C bu- building tomorrow in Kinross at eleven A M. I got a feeling they're going to have signs up to point everybody how to find the building. But it's on the S curve as you're coming in the west end. And you'll see the big old gas tanks and stuff there. It used to be pump piping piling. They were down in that area. But I hope they got it marked goods, everybody finds it. We get a good turnout for them.
We're going to Holly.
He's going to where?
Holly. Holly, it's, it's probably the biggest meeting in the state. There'll be hundred and eighty schools there.
Wow, goodbye.
We're gonna need we'll have fun. So us and Munacy and Gladstone all go down there.
Cross country?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, gosh, you buddy else? I would, I would love to take a motion to adjourn. Motion?
Yes, sir.
Support? All those in favor?